Alrighty, I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask everyone to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Molly, if you could help me with the roll call, please?
Other person Henry is excused, other person baron.
Here.
Other person Valdi.
Here.
Other person Dean.
Here.
Other person Grimmer.
Here.
Other person Kassen.
Here.
Other person Iker.
Here.
Mayor Atwell.
Present.
Administrator Hafner.
Here.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, we will go to item number four, Special Order of Business, presentation by audiovisual companies for consideration of awarding the 2022 Common Council Chambers AV Upgrade Project. No actually taken at this meeting. So basically, we have two different proposals that we're going to look at today. And the first one up is the audiovisual presentation and demo from SK Communications. If you'd like to come up and introduce yourself, give us your name and address.
Thank you very much. My name is Phil Greenwood with SKC Communications. Is this address or the person? I'm sorry. Thank you. Good evening, my name is Phil Greenwood with SKC Communications. Did you want my business address or?
Either will do.
My business address is 11370 West Theo Trecker Way in Milwaukee. And if you give me one second here, I'm going to hook up and do a little presentation. Let's see here. Will the system switch automatically? Need to bring it up. There we go, let me launch this. Alright, well, aspects a little odd. Okay, the information that I provided earlier to Molly and the city is budgetary. The proposal you saw in the meeting minutes is purely budgetary at this point. We still have a few items we need to work on, especially talking in, we had a good conversation, Molly and I did, with our design engineer, going over what we've looked at so far and a few new items have come up. But what it'll go through is that the highlight, the high points of what we're proposing, obviously what you need here in this, in this system. And just quickly about SKC Communications, again, Milwaukee, based in Kansas City, we do audiovisual, professional audiovisual, all over the country. We specialize in these types of systems, be it's, you know, corporate boardrooms, classrooms, training rooms, large conference rooms. It's our bread and butter. And what, in talking with folks here at the City Delphio, you identified several major things that you need in here, obviously, starting with the sound system as primarily, you can see the issues you're having with the wireless mics and whatnot. So you want to look at a couple of different ways of addressing a better microphone system. And we're looking at either a wired mic system or a wireless mic system. And the, the choice there between the two depends on, obviously, the functionality and budgets as well, okay? So a basic, a wired system that we do all the time, like, Shure is one of the, if not the top, one of the top microphone manufacturers in the world. This system here, these gooseneck mics, the MX series, you've probably seen them all over the place, they look obviously very similar to these guys here. On a base, we would have one per seat in here, and those are hardwired into the system. The pros of that is they're very cost-effective. If there's a con to it, it's that, that's all they do, they sit there, you can't move them around, and they don't offer any, any features, you know, they don't add any features themselves, other than it's a nice microphone, it's going to do a very good job of picking up. You're not, like, right now, you're dealing with wireless lapel mics, you've got to make sure they're placed perfectly and talk into them, deal with batteries, et cetera, et cetera. These have no batteries, they're hardwired, so there's really no maintenance to them. They do each, have an individual mute button if you want to mute yourself. And in the control system that we'll talk about in a minute here, they can be controlled, say if Molly wants to be the administrator of the meeting, she can actually control all the mics mute and unmute as, as needed. It's just one feature involved. So conversely, going to a wireless system, we propose the, the Shure MX CW, it's their wireless conferencing unit, and showing it here with and without the microphone attached, obviously you'd have the microphone. So similar, gooseneck microphone, and the advantage of the gooseneck microphone in either configuration is you've got it up closer to the person talking, okay? Any, any good sound system, you want that mic as close as possible to the person talking. You've all seen, obviously, like, the problems I talked about with lapel mics not being right.
You can't do this?
You know, you're not hearing properly, so you want a good gooseneck mic to get that as close to the person as possible. Now, the advantage of this system, the conference system, is it gives you a lot more features. Obviously, you see the base in there, you've got a nice wireless, I meant, sorry, a nice LCD screen on there, that can be used, if you want to add, say, like Molly mentioned on Friday, you might want to add a voting system in the future, that could be built into this as well. And you get the, the information up there on that screen. You do have individual muting and unmuting, this can also be controlled by a control system to unmute or globally mute, however you need that to be. It does have a couple of other neat features too, and it's got a built-in speaker. And we're talking about the, the sound system in here, right now, you know, you've got ceiling speakers and you've got some, I understand, in talking, you've got some zoning issues, which is why you've got these other wall speakers hanging here, in addition to ceiling speakers. We really need to address that to get those all zoned properly, to get you good audio coverage and avoid feedback in the mic system. This particular system has speakers built into each station, so each person here will have their own speaker right in front of them, so your, the sound's not coming out of the ceiling speakers, so that reduces any feedback potential there. It also gives you an individual adjustment level. So let's say you want yours a little bit louder, you can turn yours up or down than the rest of the folks can. We've also got a nice little jack on here, so if you really want to hear what's going on, you bring your own earphone, plug that in, you've got your own personal earphone. So if you have someone comes in who's particularly hard of hearing, they can have a nice direct earphone on it to really hear what's going on. The batteries on these are good for 11 hours, so it's not a, excuse me, you don't have to really be worried about, well gee, these things are going to last for an entire, if we have an extended meeting for some reason, it goes on for three, four hours, no problem at all. The batteries are swappable, so let's say you had some extraordinary circumstance where you needed battery backup, you could have spare batteries on hand, slap them in there, okay? And then the, getting back to the, the speakers, let's say we went with the wired system. Oops, right, went too far there, come on. The wired system, if you went with the wired mics, less expensive than the wireless, and we can address the ceiling speakers, add a few more up here, and wired it in, into what's called a mixed mine system, where your microphone, you speak into your microphone here, the sound comes out of all these speakers but not one above you, and vice versa, you speak in yours, it comes out of these, not yours. So you reduce that feedback potential, you get nice loud coverage in the entire room, if you've got a packed house, everybody can hear, you're not getting feedback in your system, okay?
Are these wired mics, battery, or is the wired include?
They are, they are powered off the system, through the hard one.
So it's not?
Yep, no batteries to mess with.
Okay. And it was an 11-hour battery for the alternate?
Correct. Okay, any other questions on the mics or the sound?
Is it rechargeable battery?
They are rechargeable, yes.
Do you ever hear how long some of these people talk, including myself?
Well, I was gonna say, if it goes extraordinarily long, you should be fine. I would hope you didn't go to 11 hours.
Not yet.
Not yet. Is that a challenge? Okay, so that's the, the high point of the, of the sound. And I'm not going to get you, if you notice on the, on the budget, you'll see a whole lot of other gear in there. The Bi-Amp manufacturer is the, the digital sound processor. These mics all have to feed into a central processor that handles all the audio processing, feeds it to the speakers, to your far end, and the things we'll talk about in a minute with the Zoom and streaming and whatnot. I'm not going to go over all those, it's pretty boring stuff, it's stuff you never touch. The microphones, that's more of a thing you use all the time, so a little more important, and a bit more impactful on the budget. Whether you go with the wireless mics or the wired mics, the backend's virtually the same. You've got a lot of the same gear back there, so it's not a, a huge change there, depending on which route you go.
Is any of the current gear that we have, I know you were in here and saw it, is any of the current gear that we have something that we could continue to utilize, or do we have to replace kind of extensively what we have back there?
Ideally, you'd want to replace, because of the age of the gear, and I know we have talked about possibly reusing some of the, the Shure wireless mics you have now to supplement these, not a bad idea, but, you know, they are getting old, if they're failing, it's getting tough to replace them. If, if you really need them, yes, we can accommodate that and tie it in, okay? The, the sound processor has a number of inputs and outputs. If there's extra inputs, it's no big deal adding your old mics, tying those in, at, you know, virtually no cost at all, I mean, a little bit of label, a little bit of wire, which is nothing. But the rest of the equipment, the processing and that, do not recommend reusing that.
Okay.
Okay, anything that's more than five, six years old, you really start running the risk of having problems down the line on it. And I'd say I've been bitten by that before, where, you know, there's a budget constraint and we reused a little mixer amplifier and doggone if it didn't die two months after we installed the system, it doesn't look good. Okay, so you really want to look at replacing it. On the video side, obviously you've got some very aging equipment, you know, you're all VGA-based, if you're ever familiar with VGA, it's old analog video system, it's essentially a dead technology now, everything's digital. So you really need to upgrade that. The camera, that of course ties in with the cameras and a lot of the backend equipment. The displays you mentioned are not that old, they seem to be in good shape, we're fine utilizing those. They're the kind of thing of, a display, you're know, you're going to know when it's going bad, right? And it's not that big a deal, let's say we keep them all in place, reuse them, and four months down the road, one of them dies, that's not a huge expense, it's not going to break your budget, right? So there's really no urgency of replacing the displays, okay? The cameras, obviously old technology analog, they do need to be replaced. The control panel I'll talk about in a second, Zoom integration you mentioned, and recording and streaming. So the cameras, very similar device we're recommending, made by Aver, very good, very, very good quality cameras at a very reasonable price point. And I'm going to stress that as well, as far as price points go, you're going to see dozens of ways of solving any of these particular points, right? My goal is not to sell you the best in the world at the best, the highest price in the world. I'm looking to get you a system that's going to work and work well for a long period of time at a very reasonable price point, okay? Now, we're looking at this as a partnership, not as I'm going to come in and sell you the best thing and you never see me again. We want to be your partner on this long-term, okay? So the Aver cameras, these are standard Pan-Til Zoom cameras. If you feel a need that you want auto-track, is everybody familiar with auto-tracking cameras? Any questions? Okay. If you feel a need for auto-tracking cameras, where you want this camera to zoom in whoever's talking, that can be done, price point, you know, cost delta there involved with that, okay? I don't have that in there right now in our budget, but again, if you feel that's necessary, we can certainly price that out for you. And we can do it one camera, both cameras, if you feel, you know, you want this, want to be auto-tracking when you're talking to folks in the gallery, you know, we can add that as well. So that's, that's something to consider. On the, let's see, did I go to? The control side, okay? The system will be operated by a, sorry, by a wireless, no, not a wireless, a wired touch panel. And we can make this as simple as you like or as complicated as you like. And it's fully custom programmed, just a few screenshots, you can see a huge variety of ways to lay these out. Our programmers work with you to determine how best to lay it out for your everyday use, okay? And as we're going to talk about in a second, I'll just jump right into it. You mentioned you want to be able to do Zoom integration. Okay, so what we have in our proposal is a system made by Crest Ron, it's called their Flex Line. And this is a native Zoom, Zoom Room system. So when you want to add Zoom functionality to this meeting right now, what you would do is set up this, set up a Zoom call, just like you'd schedule any Zoom call with your far end participants, invite them, you invite this room as well to that meeting. When you come in here, you've got one button to join, join the call, and the system is now joined with that call, okay? Now, the beauty of this system too, is this touch panel has what they call a page flip. You do a page flip on that and you can get into all of the more complicated room functions that you want. Mic, the microphone controls I mentioned earlier, you can sit, if you have a particularly heated conversation, you want to mute anybody, you can mute anybody, you can unmute, it's your turn to talk, unmute you, et cetera, et cetera, okay?
And is that done on your touchscreen, or is that done on the separate computer we have?
It's on its, on its own device, it's an old, it's own standalone device, and we can locate that anywhere, I'm sorry, anywhere you want, if you want, you know, Molly to be running that, it would sit in front of her, we can put a jack over here, if you want someone tomorrow night to run it from over there, you do that, okay? And it's, it's totally independent of any computers, laptops, it is its own standalone system. And that includes the Zoom functionality, I mentioned, this, this unit is, includes a mini PC, because Zoom has to reside, Zoom has to reside on a PC device, and that's what that system does. So you're, you get that Zoom functionality without having to haul in a laptop and navigate and do all that kind of nonsense.
If you're operating a Zoom meeting, does that render the rest of the operations of the panel unavailable?
Not at all. You start the Zoom meeting, you do a page flip, you've got everything else on the, on the panel. So if you want to, you want to operate the cameras, so to speak, or whatever, when you're, want to aim those at different presets, you do that from the touch panel too, okay? And then the last, the last item that you mentioned on the video is being able to record and stream to YouTube, okay? And we are recommending the Epiphant, this unit here, the Pearl Mini. This guy does all that functionality, takes all of your inputs that we set up and route for you, it records directly on an SD card, sends, streams out to YouTube, all from one simple device. And that's something, it's all preset, you don't have to monkey with at any point.
When you say stream, that means when we start the meeting and start that process, it's live on YouTube?
Correct.
And it's recording?
And it's recording, yes.
And to cable as well?
Not, well, not this device to cable, and that's, yeah, it's something we talked about last Friday meeting, which we'd have to address, how to, how exactly to do that. The system, again, talking about the processes in the background, the video switching, video processing, that's all sits in the background, never mess with it. That device will have an extra output that we would feed to an RF modulator. Again, working with your cable system, we need to find out the parameters, what they need for that modulator, okay? What are they, what are they looking for? We will feed that device and feed cable. So a little, little more exploration to nail that down, but it's done all the time. Okay? That's pretty much it, and I could talk, you know, I could talk a lot more about my company and what we do, you know, the basic boilerplate slideshow, but if you have any question, I don't want to bore you with that. I mean, mainly we need to nail down exactly what functionality you want, which do you feel is more important, going with the wired system and helping on the budget? Do you want the wireless system to give you more functionality and more functionality in the future, okay?
I would have a few questions about the, the battery on the wireless one. Practically speaking, how would that be done? If we've got a meeting tonight that goes for an hour and a half, there's another meeting this week, at what point would you say, just after every meeting, somebody comes and collects, flips the unit over, or how do they get it? And how long do the, what's the year expectancy on the lifetime of the battery?
The year expense, that's a good, that's a good question. I would, I don't have a, a detail on that, typically they last several years. I mean, it's a lithium-based battery, very soon, we've been using those for years on a lot of different devices, including wireless touch panels, not the wired one, wireless touch panels and others, and they, they last several years easily. And as far as your question about charging them, if you use them for a couple hours, yeah, have somebody just, they, they pop right out and go into a charging, it comes with a charging station, a base there that you line them all up and charge them overnight, or it takes a couple hours actually, but you put them in overnight and they just sit there and trickle charge and they're good, ready to go.
Okay. That's what we do with these mics after every meeting today.
Okay?
If, if I want to see a system, do you have a, well, if I want to see something like this in, in operation, what's the closest place I could go to sit down and look at something you've put together?
The, with the wired system, closest one would be City of Waukesha, we recently did their new city hall. The wireless system, the Shure one, the closest one that I know that I'm responsible for is in Madison. Customer there, actually, it's the Wisconsin Marketing Board, in their boardroom. Oh, pardon me. I could check with some of my cohorts to see if they've done any in the, in the region that I'm not familiar with, okay? And of course, if you're, if you want to see the system itself, you know, like you've got here, I'd be happy to get that and bring them in.
Is Waukesha doing the live to YouTube?
I'm not sure. They, they record everything into Granicus right now, they have a Granicus system that they use. And I'm not sure if they're streaming that right now.
Okay, two other real quick questions I have. You mentioned the headphone jack, is there any Bluetooth capability for headphones?
Not on these systems, no.
Okay. And then the other question is with the auto-track or cameras, does that at all eliminate the need for a person up in the operating room during the meetings?
Boy, I'd love to say yes, but it's, it really depends on the type of meeting, okay? If, if you, if you wanted to just, if it's just going to be the folks sitting up here on the dais that you're concerned about, then probably yes, you can set it to auto-track and it would do that. If you need to switch cameras, so people on the far end video can see folks in the gallery, someone's got to switch that. Now, does it have to be somebody, you know, back there doing a video production? No, it could just be someone with the touch panel, you can do that quite easily.
With the auto-track, what happens if two people, say one person over there, one person over here, are real quickly going back and forth with the debate?
It's going to, an auto-track is going to start out aiming at the person who's doing the most talking. If someone else starts talking over here, you would have to stop talking long enough for the system to recognize that she's not the person talking, okay? And vice versa. They won't jump back and forth, because that, that'll make people watching on TV, it won't make them seasick.
Right.
Okay, so it's, it really comes down to someone has to stop talking and then the next person takes control.
So it comes across as relatively smooth, even if there is some of that back and forth?
Oh, very, yes, yes. Because you'll hear, let's say the camera's zooming on you again, and you're talking, the system will hear someone else talking over here, but I said the camera's not going to jump until you have it, okay, obviously you're no longer the person that needs to aim at, it's going to aim over here to this person talking, okay? And that's, that's pretty, that's universal with auto-tracking cameras. You know, again, we've got dozens of different manufacturers that do that, and it's the way they set up, just, like I said, you don't want to make people sick watching something, a camera jumping back and forth all the time. Any other questions come to mind?
Well, just on that, just not to belabor the point, but if we had two auto-tracking cameras right up there, and one was looking over here and one was looking over there, they wouldn't be jumping back and forth, they might, would they create a split screen or would just hold on to one person, one person only, is it that sophisticated?
Well, if you're talking, having two cameras up here with a split screen, that's, that's a different scenario, different layout. And we'd have to look at that and, again, our engineers would talk to you to find out how you best want to do that. If you want a split screen, we can do that, okay? Well, you want people?
But it wouldn't auto-decide?
What's that?
It wouldn't auto-decide?
Uh, no.
Okay.
No. And if you're talking two auto-camera, auto-track cameras this close together, you're going to be getting into a more sophisticated auto-tracking type of system that will allow us to set frames, so this camera only looks over here, this camera only looks over here, okay? And that's, like I said, that's a little more sophisticated than just a more basic auto-track, okay? But again, I just keep, I'm repeating myself, but if you, if you feel a need for that, we can cover that, okay? But we'll have to address it, make sure it's addressed in the proposal and the equipment to cover that, okay?
Would there be a way to integrate an auto-tracking camera down the road, or is that something that we would want to do right away?
You could do it down the road, but you're going to be replacing equipment, like the, the camera, depending, I have to look, some, there are some cameras out there that can be integrated with a new auto-tracking device. This particular Aver one isn't, okay? So it's, it's best if it's something that you do from the outset, okay? If you wanted to add another one, like I say, if you do one auto-track camera to cover this and you decide down the road, you need a second and a split screen, then likely that we could be, we'd be able to add gear to accommodate that. But right off the bat, if you went with the Aver cameras they had in there, and down the road you wanted to go auto-track, you'd have to replace those two cameras, find another use for them, and put in the auto-tracking. Anything else come to mind?
Any other questions? Otherwise, we'll move on to the next presenter.
I actually do, so let's just say we were to completely eliminate the auto, like the idea of auto-tracking and just kind of have like a wide pan view there and a wide pan view there.
Yep.
How easy would that be for, not just myself, but you know, if another staff member were up here, or even like the, the chairperson for a committee to just, you know, hit the pan for, for this visual for the majority of the meeting, and then if we have simply a, you know, citizen comment or a presenter to hit the pan for that when they're, you know, just, is that easy enough to do?
Yes.
To avoid having, you know, the need for a production, but then also avoid having the need to spend the extra funds on that auto-tracking?
Right, right, very easy, I was just trying to see what we have, any examples that we have. We'd set it up, the easiest way is to set up preset buttons on there. And we could put a diagram on the touch panel, we could put a diagram of the dais in the room, and put a blue blob, this is preset one, preset two, three, four. So if you're, if you're operating it, you know, Duane is speaking, you hit that preset, the camera's over there. Likewise, you want to switch over there, you can just switch to that preset, just one, one button touch.
Okay, but would it be like, with the, with what's proposed, I mean, would it be?
That's in there, what's proposed.
Just the one, boop, this way, and the one, that way, just, you know, to call it a day, kind of, so that there isn't?
And that's, that's all covered in that, that budget.
Okay.
Yeah. That's the kind of thing we anticipate folks will want to do, they want that basic coverage, easy presets, easy control.
Right.
So the answer to the question was, you could have one camera that would catch everybody?
Yes.
Because the reason I ask is, this meeting, city council, our planning commission meeting, there's a lot more back and forth and so forth, we have a clerk that's here, we, in the past have had an AV person, but then we have committee meetings.
Right.
Like welfare committee, we, you know, sometimes we record it, most of the time now we have a, a Most of the time now we have a clerk that does the minutes there. But that just, and we don't put those on TV or stream them at all today.
Right.
So we would just need a very simple way to see the whole room and broadcast it, right? No, no operator back there, don't really need to change anything, just pretty much a stagnant camera.
Right. And that's something we can give you, again, on those page flips, we give you a page for that type of meeting, whatever you call that meeting, you hit one button and it sets everything up to do just that. Sets the camera back to that wide view, turns the microphones on, starts the recording, starts the stream. You're good. As I said, we make it as, make it as simple or as complicated as you want.
All righty. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate the opportunity.
Okay. Next up, we have an audio visual presentation and demo from Televik and Miles Pro AV. Jeff, if you want to come on up? And we'll get you to give us your name and address as well.
Sure. My name's Jeff Phillips. Address is 342 West Center Road in Palatine, Illinois. And thank you for having me here. This is, this is fun. It's nice to see my colleague Phil again. I haven't seen him for a long time. We're both in the pro audio industry for a long time, yeah. So what I'd, what I'd like to show you today is, is the Televik system. Televik is a company based in Brussels that has been doing this for a long, long time. And I don't know if any of you have ever attended a meeting in Europe, but this sort of system that I'm going to show you is how meetings in Europe work. And the reason is, there's a little bit more decorum. You push the button to talk, you know, much like on the Sure system. You, you press the button again if you're, if you're through talking. That's one mode of operation. That's the most popular mode of operation for, for folks in Europe. The second most popular way is that you press the button and what happens is that puts your name into the queue. And then whoever's chairing the, the meeting can, can hit next and then your turn comes up, your microphone LED ring comes on, which we'll see in a minute, and it's your turn to speak. And you can speak for as long as, as the chairperson will let you or, or, or until your time is up, if it's a time-related exercise. But Televik makes systems that are wired, they make stuff with systems that are wireless. Much like what you saw from Phil, it's a, it's a matter of, of what your choices are and, and camera integration, we're going to talk about that for sure as well. Just a little bit about me, I've been in this industry for, for about as long as Phil and you can tell by, by our hairlines that it's been a while. And, and, and the, I'm really excited about the Televik product. It's something that my company, Sound Marketing, has been representing for about a year and I've done countless demos and, and everyone just goes, oh, okay, get it? Yeah, this is cool. This is, we can use this. This is really well thought out for its purpose. And that's because Televik's been doing it for a long time. And it's probably one of the reasons that Sure actually got into this business to begin with is to, to offer a competing offering. So what I, what I brought today was, you know, in previous talks with Molly, the folks at Televik kind of determined that this is most likely the, the version of the, of their product that you'll end up with. I, now, what I'm hearing, what I'm hearing if, when you're all talking and asking questions is that I'm not, I'm not totally sure about that. I think you have some choices here and you have the ability to blend systems. What you're looking at is the Confero system, that, that's the, the system where you've got a station in front of you, it's got a speaker, it's got the gooseneck microphone, it's got a touch, touchscreen, but it's also, and it's got the push to talk button, right? But I'm not convinced that all the time you need, or that all of them need to be wireless. In fact, there could be, it could be that none of them need to be wireless. The cool thing is you've all got the proposal, right? Everyone's got copies of it. And so you see, there's a section for wired, there's a section for wireless, and the third section there is adding, adding tracking cameras, adding all the video side of it, including video recording and streaming. So, so you've got some options and you can put together these things. And one thing I want to make sure you know is that a lot of the things that are options are things that you don't need day one. You can add them down this, down this, down the line. If you don't need the tracking cameras right away, add them later. If you want voting, add it now, add it later, add it based on how many stations, how many delegates can actually vote. And, and when I'm saying add it and licensing, when you buy that license, that's a one-time license for any of these extra features. It's a one-time expense. So it's, it's part of the integration of, of that part of the system and then you never have to pay for it again. So I have the demo kit that they sent me to use. My station is still okay. Is everyone, okay, everyone has a station like, or no, not everyone, obviously, we only have four, but I placed them about and you're welcome to play with these. You can, you can push the button. When you push the button to talk, it, your sound comes out, everyone else's loudspeakers, okay? It turns off your own loudspeaker, but you can hear it from your neighbors, right? So, so Kent, would you mind talking to me over that, over the system?
Sure. Can you tell us more about the technology that you offer and how we might integrate it within our systems?
Can I interrupt Kent while he's talking?
Push the button.
Can you, can you, can we both talk at the same time?
The administrator of the system?
Because we like to do that.
We're Americans, dammit! We talk over each other. So, so it's all about how you all elect to, to run the meetings and there are options. And if you change your mind, or if this group likes to run their meetings one way and a different group that uses the same equipment wants to use it a different way, that's easy to change. You can change that via the, the operator's console. We're going to, we're going to look at that in just a minute. It's a web-based processor. We're going to, we're going to talk to this device right here. This is kind of the central hub and that's what's receiving and transmitting to the different delegate stations. But it also has inputs and outputs to go to external audio systems, to go to the gallery speakers, to go to, out to, to your streaming and YouTube or wherever you want to send the signal, that's where it comes off and, and, and comes in for that matter. Molly, you had asked about Zoom meetings and Kent, we were talking a little bit earlier. It seems like hybrid meetings are here forever, I think, whether it's interviewing a delegate who is, or, you know, potential employee that you guys all want to interview, but they're in Colorado or something, you're going to probably want to do that over Zoom, right? I, I say Zoom generically, it could be anything, WebEx, whatever, we don't care. But that's completely possible with a, with a Televik system. It's a matter of taking the analog audio inputs and outputs and routing them to whatever computer is actually attached to Zoom, whatever your Zoom client is, that's where the audio in and out go. So, so that, that's cool. The, through these loudspeakers, you also have an aux, auxiliary input. So that means that if you have someone with a video presentation, someone comes in and, and wants to present a, a video to, to you all and you all, you can hear that through the speakers in the, in your delegate units, but you can also hear it through the gallery speakers. When someone is speaking in a, on a Zoom call and, and for whatever reason, their audio comes out the same way. It comes out your stations and your stations. And I got to tell you, and this is something that I know Phil knows, you know, the key to intelligibility is getting the loudspeaker close to the ear and the microphone close to the mouth. That's why, you know, old style headphone, you know, hand, handsets for telephones put, you know, that you can't get much closer to the ear or the mouth than holding this up to your face, right? Same thing with our cell phones. Whenever you go on speakerphone with your cell phone, you're, you're now moving it away and you're reducing the intelligibility. The cool thing about the Televik is it is keeping that speaker pretty close to your face and the microphone very close to your mouth. So intelligibility, no matter if it's coming in Zoom or from a presentation or, or one of the gallery, guest microphones or something, it's all going to be very, very easy to understand. And you were asking about headsets and Bluetooth. I don't think any integrator likes to hear the word Bluetooth. Bluetooth is, is great for, for, well, I don't know, I had my Bluetooth in the car fail twice on me on, on the way up here. We don't want to trust the Bluetooth is what I'm saying. But if you, if you pull, bring your analog headset, you plug into the station, you, you actually have the, you have volume control so you can crank it up as high or as low as you, as you need for your hearing and your headphones. Okay? If you get delegates who, who have hearing devices in their ears already, like hearing aids that require, or that have a T coil input, we can come out this headphone jack and they can put a loop around their neck that's going to transmit that, that audio signal from the station directly into their hearing aids. Also, if, if they do have, if they, if they, if Bluetooth is the preferred way, you can get a device that'll plug into the headphone, I think this is the same with the Sure system, you can get a device that'll plug into that headphone jack and transmit Bluetooth to their hearing aids. Is that, is that, Tom, did that kind of get you for that?
It does. And just say, no, this room has a T coil installed in that.
Okay. Well, then that's another way for, for people in the gallery or, or delegates to, to be able to hear what's going on with the system, for sure. Okay. What I'd like to do next is to plug in my computer and show you what it's like to administer this system. And, and that can be really, really helpful. This could be, once we put that box onto your local area network, then we'll be able to, you know, it, it's password protected, but Molly, whether she's here or she's at her desk over there or at home, well, I don't know about if she has VPN access, can, can actually get administered to the system. And you can give those administration rights, grant them or take them away from whoever else might want to administer the, the meetings of other groups. Okay? So let's plug this in here. Where's mine? Set this on for a sec. Okay. That's the view from my house. No, not really. I live in Illinois. I don't get views like this. So the way the system is administered is you, is you get on the same network, obviously, but then you go to its IP address, boom, 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 and you come up with this dashboard and, and it's got, you can put quick links here that, that do the popular things like kill all microphones, mute all microphones, or, or start recording or stop recording. Oh, by the way, you can record audio directly to the system. There's, there's memory within this and if that's not enough for you, you can plug it at a USB drive or a USB stick and record to, to it as well. So that means that after the meeting, you could do one of a couple, one of a couple things. You can pull your memory stick out and take it to your, take it home with you, take it to the office, or you can actually, if that's, if you're still on the same network from your computer over there in the, in the administrative offices, you can, you can query this and go pull out the, go pull out the recording, listen to it, document it, you know, transcribe it, whatever you need to do with it. Okay? So, so here, here we go. You can have a look at the, the wireless channel that it's looking at. That's kind of getting kind of technical, but this does use the five gigahertz. Did everyone get the, the links that I sent earlier today? Yeah, I know Jackie did. I sent each of you, if you're, if you were on the website, then, then I got the, I got the little videos. I sent you a couple, you know, short links and if you, if you need to know more about the wireless performance of the system, that's really well described there, better than I could do. But just to know that this will, this will always choose a good channel that's available and clear and if that changes for any reason, it'll automatically switch seamlessly to another Wi-Fi channel, which I think is pretty cool. But I'm a geek. You can have a look at the devices here, you can see, you can light them up. I can turn on the, which one is this? Let's see. Oh, yep, that's, that's, that's Molly's. I can, I can, if I wonder which microphone is which, I can do this and light them up one at a time, which is really helpful when we're setting video presets, camera presets. I can go to the next tab and have a look at the batteries. The batteries are at eighty-eight, ninety, eighty-eight, ninety-four percent. If, on the bottom of each of your, welcome to pick up the stations, by the way, or pass them around to give, explore. You notice on the bottom, there's a click out battery. If you're ever curious as a delegate, how much battery I have left, you can turn it over and press the button on the battery, it'll tell you, it's got a little, little gradation there. But you notice there's also space for a second battery. So if it's, if it's Nick today or Mike tomorrow or, or somebody else monitoring things and they say, oh my gosh, Jackie's battery is getting really, really low, this meeting is going way longer than we think and her battery, you know, run up with another battery, you can hot swap it and take the, take the, the lower battery with, back with you and pop it in the charger. There's rack mount charger after the meeting. I, you know what I would do is just leave these, if you leave these things on and they're not used, they're not used for half an hour, then they will go to sleep, all by them. They go, they go into a low power mode if they're just listening anyway, but if there's, there's no activity, they will go to sleep. And you might find that you can leave them here for a couple of meetings or maybe even a whole week. You know, it's, it's, the battery, batteries are approximately eight hours minimum, twelve hours maximum. So that's if you get the units that actually are wireless, right? That's more expensive, it's a much more expensive option. It's certainly easier, but you don't need to have the, if you don't, if you just decide you don't need to have the battery operated units, then guess what? You get units that'll power up right over the cables that attach them and they daisy chain using Cat 5 E shielded cables, cables you can find pretty much anywhere. And you do have connectivity at the end of the table, right here, and on, and on Molly's side as well, you've got connectivity to actually daisy chain and send that loop back to the back room, which means that you already got the infrastructure if you decide to do a wired system. Okay? They would look exactly like this, except they'd have a cable going in and out. Now, if you want to see a system like that, this past Thursday, Maguano just went live with their Televik system. Now, they're smaller, smaller city, smaller budget and they did not go with, with the ones with displays. There's have, just the push to talk button on them, but operate virtually identically, audio wise, it's virtually identical to what they have. They too use the, what is it? Gran?
Granicus. Granicus.
Granicus. They use the right Granicus system as well and, and we tested the, the output to their, to the Granicus streaming and works fine. We, we tested and have, gave them control over the speakers in the gallery, it works fine. So if you want to run down the road, that's, that's the closest one to you right now. Questions so far?
So in looking at the quote, I noticed that there's labor, but there's not any, it doesn't appear to be anything other than the microphones and, you know, the hard supplies. What is it that the city would have to invest additionally? Is there any, you know, any proposed upgrades to the, the audio in here at all or are you suggesting we're fine with the current audio system? If we decide that we want to, you know, do the upgrades, do we have to invest further as far as the, the wiring? I'm not, maybe I'm not reading this right, I just want to make sure that we are doing our best to compare apples to apples.
Sure. The, I think the determination was made that your loudspeakers and the amplifier that powers them here for the gallery is, is okay. If there's anything that's least, least subject to change, least subject to failure, it's those, those pieces. Almost everything else is, is due for replacement.
Okay.
So I, and to more fully answer your question, you're, everything here is, is equally as old, the screens, the, the microphones, everything is, all when it all got, it all was new at the same time, what, five or six years ago? Five years ago? So, and?
I thought it was like ten years?
Yeah, ten years.
So that wouldn't require us to, you're saying that we wouldn't need to replace much as far as the wiring goes?
No. And it's a little simpler system, there is no touchscreen. Instead, you've got this, you've got your display here. Web browse to that from anybody's device, so there's no, no device that you have to buy, there's nothing we need to really program. You know, there, there is a video.
If you wanted to go HD, HDMI, you'd have to switch the VGA to HDMI plugs. Audio, you can come down Cat 5, video, you can come down Cat 5, make it more compact and, and user friendly. With any new system that comes in for installation, you always want to try to check your wiring. If any of the wiring is outdated- If any of the wiring is outdated or getting brittle, I would highly recommend changing that right away. Versus compact, if you want to do that, if you want to change screens, that's a couple of bolts and a plug. You know, I mean, that, that I don't feel needs to be replaced. We did just put the Evid system in not too long ago, I believe, right? The gallery speakers?
The eggs.
The wall mounted ones? Those are only a few years, right?
I'm not.
I'm not sure.
I believe those are only a few years old. I think we pretty much nailed that feedback problem, as well as, I think with the Televik system, I think that would help everybody hear themselves a lot better, to where we wouldn't need to use the ceiling speakers at all. Just using those Evids would be, you know, a suffice situation.
Okay.
Other questions, Molly?
So, I'm curious as to how the, like, the dual integration could work with the wired microphones and then the wireless, and how that would work with the system, or what would be required to do that. I know the, the concern that I have heard is for the occasions where there's a meeting in here and we need to move into the the gallery, being able to move, obviously, a wired system, you know, isn't necessarily possible. Is the wireless system, this wireless system capable of, you know, taking all 14 microphones and moving them down there seamlessly, or?
You could grab your microphone right now and go sit in any seat in the house. You could probably go over to the library and still be on the system, and and you'd be able to hear every other delegate in your, in your speaker.
Would that affect at all the, the speakers up here that you have, or would that create?
But we can make sure that doesn't happen. That's just a feedback.
Like any microphone that you put under a loudspeaker, you got to consider where where it is, yeah. But the fact that the microphone, your goose neck microphones are so close to the face, we don't have to apply much gain, and that keeps us further away from feedback. So, yeah, it should be pretty clean. Now, if you, just a sec, if you, if you are going to do a meeting like that, that involves the the space of the gallery, you may want to reduce the level from the, from the Evid loudspeakers there, but you'll all be able to hear through your, through your speakers on the, on the unit. You would have control on this page of how loud the speakers are in the units, so.
Does that affect the recording volume and such?
No.
Or like the streaming volume?
So, that volume is separated in the controller between a mixer, so that whatever you're hearing out of there is just your personal preference.
Yeah, so I can, I can take the speaker volume and crank it up pretty high. I can also control everyone's headset volume, unless I've also elected to have the controller own headset volume. That's fine, too.
I can also, I can also control the, the level of the auxiliary input here, that's, that's the showing on screen, and that would be from everything else that's, you know, from a presentation video or from Zoom. And I can control the auxiliary output, which is how, how loud it is outputting the audio signal from the meeting to Zoom and to, so if someone is listening to the Zoom call and they say, hey, Ed, we're a little bit soft here, then you can, you can actually pull this lever up right here, boom, done. And as to, answering an earlier part of your question, yes, we can still blend this, this new system, the Televik system, in with your existing set of wireless microphones, if that's, if that's desirable or necessary.
I think it's, it's a cost savings thought, along with, you know, if we can save money in doing wired and maybe having, you know, a handful of, I'm just trying to offer, you know, alternatives and trying to brainstorm here as far as what we can do to?
Oh, absolutely.
Upgrade and update, but stay reasonable.
Let's say you decided to get six delegate stations and share them between each, each pair of people, or maybe seven, because there are 13 of you, right? Then, that's fine. And then the minute that you decide, well, really want to give everyone else their own, you could do that, too. Just add them, add them into the loop, readdress them. If you decide that, you know, it's sixes, we only want these six people on, or eight people, or whatever number, and the rest of you are going to have lavaliers, we could do that. Yeah, it's not a problem. Camera tracking, should we, should we move from audio to video for just a sec?
Sure.
Okay, so, camera tracking, the TCAM system that's described there, if you had a chance to watch some of the little videos that I, that I sent the links around to earlier today, then you saw that in action. You saw that, you know, here's the chairperson, and then the, this, this delegate starts speaking, and the camera moves over to them. How that's doing that is, is we've, we can help you map out what chair equals what microphone, okay? Or, you know, sometimes a microphone is shared by, by a couple of people, that's fine. But we can set, and then we set presets in the, in the video system to match up with who's got the open mic. And when, you know, the, to answer the question you guys asked earlier, what happens when, you know, Tim and Jackie are talking, right? So, it, well, it, it goes to wide shot. It goes to a shot that, that, that will catch both of them at the same time. Or it switches, or it switches between cameras seamlessly, like the example showed, because it's a two-camera system. Yeah. And and it should be, as long as the seats don't move around too much, it should be set and forget it. Now, if the seats do move, there's an easy way for, for you, the administrator, to, to adjust for that and change the, the shot, or ask the guys from Miles to do it. Jim, what do you think?
Sounds good. Comes down to money.
Sounds good. Good word choice.
So, how about, how would your system address the, the live streaming on the internet and also the cable? How would we interface with those? You know, those are?
It's, it all.
The manual processes for us thus far, and we don't want that.
Right. That would all, the input and output for audio all come off of that white box right there, and that would be probably on the back wall. So it's really close to the audio room. What we do with that audio input and output to the system is completely up to you. It would most likely, in the current scenario, be routed into the Behringer mixer in the rack, and from there, it can go to the individual outputs, and it's individually controllable then in level for the stream versus the Zoom versus the recording.
So, we would have a live feed to internet streaming, and we'd have a live feed to Channel 25 on cable?
Yes. Both Channel 25 and, and a live stream would have the benefit of, of the nice auto mixing that's happening up here at the table, and the fact that your microphones are very close to your face.
We do playback, so when we're not live streaming on Channel 25, we do have a program set on that channel where we do have certain times of day reruns, because we're really popular. Who doesn't want to watch us all day long? And then when we don't have our reruns going, we have a slideshow. Does this system account for that capability?
Yes, in the electronics unit. If you look on page four, the last page of this, that's part of the whole video package that Miles is, is, is offering. And, sorry, my laptop just went to sleep again. The electronics allows for scheduling, slideshows, overlays, whatever is, whatever is necessary. And you have a electronics unit right now. It's, it's.
Yeah, it's not easy to use.
Not easy to use?
The programming is, it's, I know it's old, it's outdated, but it's, you know, we need to, we need to be able to have something that somebody who is not like, you know, a network specialist, to be able to utilize. It's, I'm relatively computer literate, and it's cumbersome for me to.
Yeah, I completely get that, yeah. The electronics is designed for video engineers. It, it, it has very nice strengths, but also the weakness is it's not exactly intuitive. And maybe that's something we look at. Maybe that, this particular unit is, has been surpassed by something else in the electronics field, or, or maybe that's a, that's a, we need to look at a different piece, you know? That's, that's open, and that has nothing to do with my, my side, the Televik side. But it is a concern, so now it's noted, and we'll proceed on that.
And then the other question, and maybe this was addressed, and I was just reading and not paying attention, and I apologize if that was the case. The, the Zoom meeting launch, is, is that simple? How do we, how would we do a Zoom meeting, or?
Well, a Zoom meeting would be, you need a computer to do that. In any case, you need a computer to do that. Whether the computer is built into the touchscreen, as in, as Phil was talking about it, or whether it's the laptop that I bring into the room, either way, you need a computer to be the codec, you know, the encoder decoder. And so that's, and so we'd be taking audio in, into and out to, out of the, the computer via USB.
So, who?
Either way, the audio would come back to there, the video would come back to there, and you would just add it into the system like you are now, except for you have a temporary user now. You would just have to add it into the system.
Right. So, it would be a computer back there, is what we're saying, because that's where the audio input now, unless we make a special arrangement, use one of your existing cabling paths to get the, bring, bring the signal back up here. It's possible, but more likely you'd have a computer back there. You'd start the meeting, get everyone signed in, and there you go.
But I do believe you can set a timer on Zoom to initiate the program. So, when you set, when you start the meeting, you can do a delay timer to a certain amount of minutes, and then it'll automatically start recording. So, if you're 10 minutes out, you hit the 10-minute timer button, and then it automatically starts setting. When you 10 minutes delay it.
Guess my concern is the functionalities of Zoom during the meeting, then, would be in back and not up front?
We must be brought the signal up to you, yes.
We could, we could extend the signal up to you if that would make it easier for you. Not a problem. Your choice. And it's a, it's a relatively cost-free change.
Keep in mind, Molly, the more signal we bring to you, the more you'll have on your hands for the meeting.
Right. I'm not.
Yeah, so, keep in mind, you know, the more, the more it's put on your place, the more you're going to have to do.
Make Danielle do it.
I mean, the likelihood is, is it would end up here, somebody's got a, you know, in the event that we do have to have that meeting, it's, it's been, it is difficult, and it's not preferred, but somebody does have to kind of have that access and capability. So, I just want to make sure that it's not gone in the back and forgotten, and I guess I'm, I'm having a hard time picturing the Zoom and how it would work without having to have the screen and computer up here and, you know, clicking buttons back and forth on, on either system proposed, other than to have the computer up here and have to do those clicking and, and whatnot. And we don't do Zoom often, but it's still an option here on occasion, and just want to make sure we're prepared for that.
Well, I, I agree with you. The, my congregation is, is still not doing live church services, we're, we're still remote, and it really helps to have someone, someone in charge, monitoring, in, in control, setting priorities and, and, and things right there. It helps to, Zoom helps to have an operator, yeah.
Just wondering, we have a fairly.
Okay. So, are there any other questions?
Okay, so please, if you, if you run it, if you go like, ah, on the way home, you're thinking, oh, man, I wish I'd asked you have something. You've all got my email, you've all got my, my, my cell phone number, and just please ask, pick up the phone or email me, and, and do copy Molly so she knows what's being asked, and, and we'll all be good. Thank you for your time tonight, appreciate it.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we want to discuss any of those topics? I mean, I just had one question for the council, and that is the auto-tracking cameras. I mean, anybody feel we really need those? Or anybody feel we really don't need those, or let Molly decide? It seems like a big expense to kind of go one way or the other on.
I guess my opinion is simplicity. I don't need a lot of, you know, frills, reliability, ease of use. I want to be able to interrupt someone while they're trying to interrupt me, I want to be able to.
What are you talking about?
Exactly. I want to be able to, yeah. I mean, those are my needs. That's, that's what I want. And not having an operator is obviously a cost savings, and I think advantageous.
Any other comments?
The other big question is wired or wireless?
On the mics?
Yeah.
Are you talking 11-hour battery? But these are recharged, you said, every?
Every night.
Every night? All right, so I guess that's not a barrier.
I'd just say, whatever gets decided on, we need to be fair to everyone. We need a concise statement of work, as far as what are must haves, what are nice to haves, and let people provide proposals. I got to ask a lot of questions about what we want. I have no idea what was proposed versus apples to apples. It was a, this was pretty much wide open as far as, hey, what do you guys want? Here's some cool capabilities. I, I'm so far from being able to make a recommendation about one was better than the other. We need to, we need to define what we want and say, you, go look at it, it's here, what do you think? And say, yeah, give me that plus this, not, these were, these were kind of wide open, define what you want with a clues of different combinations of products. And we're introducing, I didn't see anything more simple than what we have now. We're introducing multiple computers into both of these solutions for someone to manage. They're both IT and audiovisual integrations that need someone to show, so, someone needs to sit down and see these things in practice and say, yeah, give me exactly that. I don't want to invent something. I, I think that's a monumental task to try to design it ourselves. I would love to just drive to McQuanago and say, hey, theirs is great, or Walkshow's great. Give me this, what does it cost? That's my recommendation.
There used to be goose necks here, was there not?
Yes.
And they were gotten rid of for any particular reason, or just age, or convenience?
Don't know. Don't remember. I liked them, but I liked wired goose necks myself.
Well, I think the needs of.
It's because people were talking and leaning back. But now people are dropping their mics and fumbling with them. So, we've got, got different issues.
And I think the needs of the council might be secondary to the needs of Molly and administration. I mean, I need to be heard, I need to hear all of you and all of them, and count my vote. That's, whether I'm on camera or not, I don't care.
Any other, any other comments otherwise? We're moving on. Thank you for the feedback. All righty. Okay, we will go down to five, approval of minutes of December 20th.
Move to approve the minutes.
A second?
All ready, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, passes.
Is that Iker and Cassin?
Yeah.
Okay.
Six, City of Delafield citizens' comments. Any citizens' comments? Any citizens' comments? Hearing none, citizens' comments are now closed. Umavanda 7A, discussion possible action regarding Resolution 2022-01, a resolution establishing a polling place and reporting unit within the City of Delafield. Questions on that, or is there a motion?
Why is there, why is there two polling places established in the even-numbered years?
It's a, that's a reporting unit. It doesn't change the polling place, it's the reporting unit, and it's because we have two supervisory districts, so we have to report those separately.
Okay, thank you.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, passes. Okay, I'm going to jump to 9A, unfinished business to have one of our guests be able to get in and out of here quickly, I hope. Discussion possible action regarding the request from the Delafield Lions Club for approval to place a drop box somewhere near the library for charitable eyeglass donations. Erv, you want to come on up? Name and address, please.
My name is Erv Sadowski.
You need, you need a mic, Mr.
I need a microphone. There you go, one of ours, thanks. Hi, Erv Sadowski, 1534 Second Street, Delafield. Hi, Erv Sadowski, 1534 Second Street, Delafield. And I'd like to thank you for allowing me to come here to represent the Lions. And I passed out a sheet of paper on our idea for a drop box for the glasses for charity, possible locations. It could go next right next to where the American flag box is, or my thoughts are ready as you come in on the library side. There's a space there. This is red, white, and blue. It'll have a Lions logo. That'll be the signage and possibly one more logo where you see that 1776. It's a typical mailbox. We'd monitor it every four to six weeks, or we also have someone else that possibly could look into it. But generally, you don't get a ton of eyeglasses in there. They're just consistent. The eyeglasses that we get donated to us, the vast, vast majority stay in North America, the U.S. Some do go to Mexico due to some of the poverty and the cartels that are there, but generally they're all staying here in the U.S. And all the Lions organizations in North America, basically, that's our number-one goal is eyes. So if you have any questions, I'd be very happy to answer them. If not, we feel it would be a good addition for the city as well as for us.
So you're happy with indoors?
Pardon me?
You're ha you're happy with indoors?
Well, you'd have much more traffic, because you've got two doors coming in, two people coming to council meetings.
If you could use the mic, Erv.
Oh, yeah, you we'd have much more traffic seeing it indoors. And secondly, it's very small. It's a typical mailbox, and there's two little corners it could go in. And we just feel we hopefully would get more donations for.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, passes. Thank you very much, Erv.
Thank you. Thanks, you guys. Thanks, Joe.
All right, we'll move on to number eight, 8A licenses. Thank you.
Thanks.
None.
Okay, we'll move on to B, planning commission. Mr. Iker.
We haven't had a planning commission since our last council meeting. We have one at the end of this month. I just encourage everyone watching or here paying attention in any fashion to to look at the planning commission agendas as they come up over the next few months. We've been going through the recommendations from the Economic Development Committee meeting, and some of those have received some changes in in order because we've got proposals that are coming as a result of some of that stuff. So that's all really good, and it's what the what that committee was for. So just I encourage everyone, it's not that boring, just take a glance at the planning commission agenda sometime late every month and see if it affects or interests you. And most, if not all, those recommendations for any kind of change is going to come to the council anyway, so you're going to get a couple swings at it. So just pay attention. That's that's it for planning commission.
Sounds good. Thank you. 8C, Lake Welfare Committee. Phil?
I had a meeting last week. There wasn't any extraordinary business. I just continued conversation about trying to make sure rain gardens are preserved along the lake. That'll be continuing and may not have the February meeting.
Okay. Great. Thank you. D, Park and Rec, Mr. Grimmer.
No meeting, no report. Next meeting is the 24th of this month.
All righty. E, Public Works, Mr. Barron.
We did have a meeting, and next month, which the meeting is on the 2nd of February, there's a public information hearing about the path on Naguika Road that's going north, basically north of the Park River. And we also went through the whole, in addition to that, just the plans for the overlays and the street repairs this year, and goal is to put entire packet out for bid together. So that was the gist of the meeting, and just so people are aware that we're going to have that information meeting regarding the the extension of the Naguika Road path.
Sounds good. All right, F, Delhart, Mr. Iker.
Next Delhart meeting is tomorrow at 5:30. That would be it.
Sounds good. G, Police Commission. Phil, do they have anything?
No.
No?
No meeting in a minute.
Okay. H, Library Board, Jackie.
The thing I'd like to do regarding the library board is, Nick, if you want to, there you go. Just I submitted this, if you've had a chance to look at the e-packet. You can leave it right there. Thank you. I wanted to talk a little bit about how the library is funded and how our board is configured based on that. I'm not sure I even answered the board funding, and I got the impression that others did not either. The first thing, and I don't know if you looked at this, but state statute guides everything. So every public library is administered by a board, and for a city our size, they have specific allowances. One is that a member can live outside the city, except not more than two may be residents of a municipality. We're considered a Class IV city, so we are allotted seven members. You go to the next slide, Nick? Thank you. Also, one of the things that guides our membership on the board is part of the seven-person membership, is the statute requires that a public the public school district in which the library resides shall have a representative that the school district, federal moraine, appoints. And we've had the same person. I don't know, Stephanie, how long, Holly?
Twenty, about four years.
Four years, okay. So that person is part of our our membership. The amount of county funding provided to a library is determined by the usage of the library, and this is where I think it gets kind of interesting, by people living in communities without their own library. And in Waukesha County, they're referred to as true non-residents, CNRs, of acronyms. So in 2020, the Delafield Library received $333,124 in funding from the county. The city contributed that same year, $399,723. I did submit, which I won't go through, a more detailed one from the county Bridges Representative with other years and other funding. If you go to the next slide, Nick, thank you. What the county and the statutes required is what I would call proportional representation. Waukesha County communities have representation on our board in addition to the seven, not including the seven, proportional with their tax dollars. If you just do the simple math of 333,000 and some change, what percentage of 399,000? That's 83%. The statute says that if a county, the people outside the city are contributing to at least two-thirds of the funding, then they can have four additional members, may be appointed. The county contribution is 83% of our city of Delafield contribution, and the county then has the authority to appoint these members. Generally, it's pretty cooperative. It's not like they are difficult to do, but I wanted people to understand, I got the impression that there was a feeling that we were watering down Delafield's representation, if we are not. If you go to the next slide, Nick, thank you. The annual contribution, I'm a woman who loves graphs, to the Delafield Library. Essentially, the city does contribute more, but the county contributes, the county taxpayers who are also users of our library, because people choose it, and that money is collected to help us fund our library is, in my opinion, substantial. So 45, well, 45.5% of the annual budget for money. Now, you all know it varies from year to year, but it is definitely exceeds the two-thirds minimum. So if you go to the, I think it's the second, the last slide, yeah, thank you. Equitable representation. We have seven City of Delafield representatives, including our board president, who meets the statute, 43.54, our KMSD-appointed librarian, that's 63% of the board membership, and 36% of the board membership are county representatives. Partly, this is to just understand if you, Nick, if you'll go to the long letter, yeah, that's perfect. You just leave it right there. If you want to look at it or even talk to Carol Kennedy, she's the county representative and is steeped in the statutes much more than I, but understands like the nuances. The library is one of those unique entities, because we are part of the city, and yet we are also, we have a lot of funding that we get also from the county, and that helps us run a much better library. So questions? There's no action, I just wanted to explain this.
Well, I appreciate you explaining it. And that's always been my understanding. I just want to point out that even the county representatives are appointed by who represent us. So if someone has a problem, they, our county board supervisor happens to be the county board chairman.
Right, there you go.
For the most part, though I think part of the city's going to have a new supervisor. And the county executive is also responsive, and I think, I mean, as I was on the county board, we have a similar situation to the city, is that we are always trying to recruit good people to serve on committees. So if if someone's interested in library board and there's not apparently enough room on city side, talk to the county or vice versa.
Yeah, we have people who are serving on the board who are former librarians, people who are presently librarian. I mean, they are so, I'm the slacker, the library, by far. I'm the biggest slacker. And and I mean that very sincerely, and I love them and I support them so deeply, but they are incredibly knowledgeable about how these things, these things are our library runs, which is why I think it is so high-function. That's it.
I'll comment, Jackie. Thanks thanks as well for putting this together. It helps explain to people who had questions. And I'll I'll say that from experience, I was first elder person when the buildings were getting negotiated and there was referendums about how much was going to be spent, wrestling over what percentage the library should pay for the use of this room, what should be used in this room, when elder person didn't want animal crackers in the drawers in the council room or the piano in the corner. I mean, there was some very interesting wranglings about the the library's role in the city as a whole and and how it was funded, and some of those things worked themselves out just organically. And the funding situation is something that I I think the way things played out, this is kind of a little my history lesson and my brief history here, but I think we right-sized our library. I think we have a really nice-sized library, and and if you look at how we our funding formula works compared with other libraries in in Waukesha County, and now we're headed out toward Jefferson a little bit, we're the beneficiary of a lot of funds from the county, and we're we're also beneficiaries of being able to host. We paid the brick and mortar here, but we're getting this funding as at a ratio that we might be the highest or second-highest, I think, in Waukesha as far as as far as the county county funding. And so having representation representing those funds makes sense. And so this is helpful in understanding that.
We would not have the library we have without the additional aid of county funding.
Or significantly higher taxes.
I think it's a real, is a flagship of what our city, it it represents us well, the what the services that our library gives, the mission that we as a city have chosen have with by having a library, but to have such an excellent, just makes us look good, frankly.
Good, yeah, I agree. And I brought this up again, just to try to reemphasize that some of the, there was some brief strife a decade ago, and it's gone. It's a distant memory. I appreciate all this stuff that's going on with the library and the good work that's getting done.
All right, that's it. No, no action required, just.
Yeah, so I I also greatly appreciate you going through that, Jackie, and I've been one that's complimented the what the library board and library has done for, I think, as long as I've been sitting here. I mean, they do a remarkable job, and everybody on the committee does. But the question that I had brought up at the last meeting, and the question I I'm still trying to get a a clear response on, is that, you know, during the meeting of November 18th, you the board chose to change their bylaws, which is a little difficult to tell from the minutes and from the agenda, but indeed, that's what took place. The actual wording and stuff is is hard to find, but the reality of it is, is that, you know, your old bylaws said that you had five members shall reside in the City of Delafield, and the motion that was made reduced that to four members shall live in the City of Delafield.
I think what you're you're looking for, come on.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, come on up, please, Stephanie. Please.
Well, that's why I asked Stephanie to be here.
Thanks. Just figure it's easier to address me than Jackie. Do I have to introduce myself?
Yeah.
Okay.
Name and address.
Stephanie Ramirez, library director, address 500 Genesee Street, this building. The bylaws were amended because it was, oh, sorry, I can't back up. The bylaws were amended because it was basically a typo. It was, it said five City of Delafield members. It also said, in accordance with Chapter 4354, which is exactly what Jackie was mentioning. So that's all we amended, is to take out that one word that said five city members to reflect that. So we were already, because our board president moved, this is why it came up, it is part of the two exception members. So we matched the board, the bylaws that were already in place with the chapter that Jackie mentioned, which was already in the bylaws. All we took out was the strictly the five city members. That is not anything to do, we didn't restrict any members, we are not out of compliance, as Jackie mentioned. That's all that was.
I think it's no different than what we do all the time here. Molly has gone in and noticed that these things don't don't jive, so that's all.
Correct.
That was done. There's nothing sinister, nothing.
I appreciate the the answer, and I agree, the the change that you made is totally an allowable change. It does comply with state statute, but the issue that came up that was in conflict was that your bylaws were erring more on the side of more City of Delafield residents with five, and the state statute's at a minimum of four. So when you change you changed your bylaws, you in theory, in practicality, went from five required citizens from the City of Delafield that would be appointed by the mayor to four citizens that would be appointed by the mayor and made that one person then appointed by the county.
I understand what you're saying. The bylaws were, at that point, in what you're saying, it had to it had to match. So I I understand what you're saying, that you think you're having less representation, but in actuality, it wasn't. I understand that you're trying to say that the five members still aren't there, but again, because it said already, have the five members or in compliance with 4354, which it was, there's really no cha. I understand what you're saying, and I understand that, like Jackie said, you think the representation is diluted, but it wasn't. And we simply changed that bylaws so that everything matches completely.
Yeah, but do you agree with my statement that the mayor would have appointed five that had to be citizens from the City of Delafield? And you're in total compliance with the change, but now the mayor only can appoint four?
No, that's not that's not correct either. As Jackie said, we have seven. You have seven.
We have seven.
That are allotted. The two are the exceptions. So you technically have five already and two in addition to. The two in addition to are the board president, 4354 exception, and the KMSD representative, which is appointed by whoever, excuse me, the superintendent. And oftentimes, as Carol mentioned in her letter, I don't know if you saw that, is outside of the city, because it's just whoever works at the district that is appointed by the superintendent. You still have five city representatives here.
Yeah, so I we don't have to get into this further tonight, but I I I think maybe it would be a good idea if the city clerk and myself or the city administrator got together with you and Jackie and just went over this math, just so. The only purpose I bring this up is for process, and the way we've read it and the city attorney has interpreted it, that it is a reduction. And if you're choosing to make that choice, we understand it, we just want you to understand the the math behind it. And at the end of the day, I'm just trying to make sure, the only reason I'm even digging into this is that that the process is being followed, whether the mayor appoints or whether the county appoints and how that process works. At the end of the day, that's all I'm really interested in.
I'm concerned, though, I just have to put this on the public record, that I'm concerned, though, I just have to put this on the public record, that when you had a concern, you didn't talk to anybody that was involved with the library, the experts in, in the rules. You talked to your city attorney, but you didn't talk to Carol Kennedy, who represents and understands the rules. You didn't talk to the director of the library. You talked to everybody else. You didn't talk to me. I'm on the library board. So I get that you have this idea that we have reduced the representation and we have some sinister ulterior motive because that's how it feels.
It's not.
If you have a concern and a problem, then talk to the people who are actually running the library and not say, okay. But I think right now, I would like to move the meeting forward because there is no discussion and action to happen on this and we can carry this on. But there are, there are five representatives and, and they are meeting the state statutes. It is legal. All we did on November 18th was align things the way Molly has done with many of the codes from the state to the city. And there's been no questions about any of it. So my concern is that next time we have a concern or a question, you actually talk to the people who run the area that you're questioning rather than everybody else except us.
Yeah. So we did reach out to the county, Jackie, and there was conversations between the clerk and Stephanie. So, I mean, again, it's just about trying to make sure we're all following the processes correctly and understand the math.
So this isn't enough?
I, I would appreciate it if you and Stephanie would be agreeable to meet with the clerk and the city administrator. I don't even have to be there. I just want to make sure that we all understand the process and that we're doing the math correctly. And we know who appoints who and that process is being followed. That's all. Would you be agreeable to doing that?
At some point in time, you do know I do have a job and this is not my job.
Okay.
I have a full-time job. I dedicated the school district of Waukesha, pay bills, not you. I'm happy to meet with you, but it has to be a work so that I'm not interrupting my life. Stephanie has, so yes, of course, we'll meet.
Great. I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
We've also had, you know, as you mentioned, we have all the policies. We are in compliance, as I've said. I've also given the ruffle roster with the addresses of our board members months ago. So, and that has not changed since then. So.
Okay. Well, thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
And I have one real quick question. Why does our Wi-Fi not work? I've had to use my iPhone. Keeps telling me there's Wi-Fi.
Yeah, I had the same.
Yeah, I haven't been.
Are you trying to connect to the library Wi-Fi?
No, it's the, both of them didn't work.
So the city of Delafield's Wi-Fi has been down since last week. Spectrum is due to come out on Wednesday.
Okay. Just curious, because it's never happened.
Yeah. Unfortunately, they were here, the gentleman said that everything was working and then left and then now they couldn't come back until this, this Wednesday. So I apologize for that.
All righty.
Not sure about the library, though. That's.
Thank you very much. Okay, number 10, mayor's report. Mayor has no report. We'll move on to 11A, discussion of possible action regarding the logistics plan for the construction of the Hendrix project at 705 Genesee Street, requiring common council approval for the restricted use of the southern third of the municipal parking lot for.
Did we go through the rest of the board reports?
Oh, I'm sorry. Did I skip it? I'm sorry. I had my check marks there. Sorry. All right. Zoning Board of Appeals, no meeting. Promotion of Tourism, Jim?
Yes, we had a meeting and nothing, nothing too substantial there. The one comment I will make is that we are grateful that it appears our revenues are recovering from COVID. Looks like we're running at pace or better than 2019 right now. And so that should solve a lot of our fiscal problems that we had for a year with the library with the promotion and tourism, both on the marketing side and the city side.
Yeah, you've had great numbers, what, Tom, for at least two or three quarters?
We'll know next month when we get the fourth quarter and say, but we're speculating that it has recovered.
Sounds great.
I'm concerned it might take a turn for the worse here. We'll see. But we were really strong in the second and third quarters. Best, best second and third quarters ever.
Yeah.
Anything else there, Jim?
No.
Okay. Okay, Lake Country Fire and Rescue Commission, probably no meeting. Lake Country Fire and Rescue Board, Mr. Grimmer?
Our January meeting was canceled. Next meeting is February 16th. No report.
Okay. Committees, dear management committee, I don't believe they have a meeting. I know they have one coming up, I believe, next week. Danielle's not here. So if they did have a meeting, I'll refer you to the minute. Was it last week? Oh, it was last week. So I'll refer you to the minutes. Okay, now to 11A, discussion of possible action regarding logistics plan for the construction of the Hendrix project at 705 Genesee Street, requiring common council approval for the restricted use of the southern third of the municipal parking lot for construction staging, elimination of the on-street parking on Genesee Street between Main Street and Milwaukee Street during construction, sidewalk closures on the north side of Main Street, Dopkins Street to Genesee Street, the west side of Genesee Street, Main Street to Milwaukee Street, and the west side of Dopkins Street from the municipal parking lot entrance to the Main Street during construction, closure of Dopkins Street from Main Street to the entrance of the municipal parking lot during construction, and a temporary narrow and shifting of travel lanes on Main Street and Genesee Street adjacent to the construction site during construction. Woo. Thanks, Tom. You want to give us an overview? Unfortunately, the applicant is not able to be here due to an unfortunate situation. So they've worked really well with the chamber on this. The city's worked well with the other organizations. It seems to be a pretty robust plan to me and happy to answer any questions that you guys may have on that.
What's the term, is there any dead ends? When we close the, let's see, west end of Dopkins Street, municipal parking lot to the entrance of Main Street, what does that do to the end of Milwaukee Street by the coffee shop?
Yeah. So from, from Genesee Street, you'll be able to drive into Milwaukee Street, drive onto Dopkins and get to the municipal parking lot.
To turn around if you had.
Yeah, not get any further than that.
I was worried about the turnaround there. What is the, and I'm assuming that the police chief and the fire chief are on board with what's going on here?
Yep, there.
Yep. We've had meetings with really everyone. Farmers Market, did we get that one?
No, we still need to work things out with the Farmers Market.
It's our last hanging chad, Farmers Market.
Two questions for you. One was, it says the parking lot, municipal parking lot will be open July 6th through 11th?
For the block party.
Okay. Kind of what I figured. But the second question was, it says that the city of Delafield will pay for half of their repairs to the lot. Wondering how that determined once all the equipment is repaired a bit and it's going to be repaved?
So originally, the city did ask for Hendrix to be responsible for their full repaving of that portion of the lot. And they pointed out that the existing pavement is in poor condition already. And so they proposed a 50-50 cost share for that.
That probably is going to go into 23 budget, I would assume.
Yeah, we're planning on also putting into the 2023 budget, the paving of Dopkins Street and Milwaukee Street between Genesee and Dopkins as well, because that's been in very poor condition. And we've been waiting for this construction to happen before we do that.
So that's not like a, so it's not like a patch that we're resurfacing? I mean, we're doing something that would be otherwise done?
Well, the other question we'll have to take a look at, and we haven't made a decision on it, is whether we would propose doing the entire municipal parking lot at the same time, because it really is in poor condition currently. Chances are, if not for this construction, we probably wouldn't have repaved the parking lot in 2023, but it probably would have been in maybe 2026 or something like that, 2025, a few years, a few years further out. But it might make sense to do it all at the same time.
What's, what's the ballpark on the, ask for that?
We have not costed that out yet.
Assuming over 100 grand.
For a third of the parking lot?
Oh, no?
So Hendrix is just proposing a third of the parking lot.
Yeah. Just a yellow hashed area.
Can we get some, can we get some water dripped into the floorboards?
We just did the, we just did the parking lot at the Fish Hatchery Sports Complex this year, and I think that was about $40,000. So that's about, probably about similar size to that one-third of the municipal parking lot.
That's a grind and pave, right? That's not a complete redo, right? They basically grind off the top, take it away and then repave it. That's what we're talking about, right?
We'll do a pulverizing surface based on the existing cracking and that, and that reflect back through.
Okay. Did we pulverize the parking lot you're referencing?
We did, yes.
We did, okay. Any questions?
Do you need a motion?
We do, for the, for the private use of public property.
I'll make a motion on 11A as described in the attached memo.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, passes. Okay, approval of the voucher list, B.
I move to approve the voucher list. I'll second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, passes. City Administrator?
No report this evening.
City Clerk?
Just would like to note that we will not be having, or we, the city of Delafield does not have to have a primary election in February. So we're in the clear, but we will be getting ready for the April election here in, probably starting in February. We did the drawing for the placement. That notice is on the website if you're curious as to the ballot order. And that's about it for, for the city clerk's office right now.
Great. Thank you. City Treasurer's report is in the packet. Council request for future agenda items. Can ask now or you can ask up to, I don't know, before the packet goes out, on the Friday before. So seeing none, we'll move on. 13A, Public Works Committee informational meeting, February 2nd, 2022 Naguica Road project. And then we're on to number 14. Matters of possible closed session. Motion to convene into closed session pursuant to the provisions of Wisconsin Statute 19.85, see considering employment, promotion, compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the government body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, more specifically regarding the performance, review and compensation of the city administrator, director of public works. The council will convene into open session after completion of the closed session to consider the balance of the agenda. Looking for a motion to convene into clo, uh.
I'll also move to go into closed section under 14A.
I'll second.
Okay.
All right. Roll call vote on that. Roll call vote on that motion. Henry is absent. So Barron?
Aye.
Valdi?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Grimmer?
Aye.
Cassin?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. We are now in closed session. Thank you for attending this evening.
We will convene into open session after.
We'll make sure to haze him, right? Mark?
You.
Mayor, you might want to read into the record. We just had a motion that was passed to go into open session.
Just passed the motion to go back into open session. It was unanimous.
So, Mayor, I could make a motion that the city administrator will receive the same pay increase as the rest of the general employees were granted, the same as this settlement last year for 2022.
Second?
Second.
Discussion we need to add retroactive back to January 1st?
Retroactive to January 1st, 2022.
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes? Okay, seeing no further business, we are now adjourned at 9:55. Thank you, everyone that came back or stayed on.